All right, let's call this meeting in order. Please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Number three, any citizens daring to be heard? Mr. Ball?
Yes, sir.
Anything?
Nada.
All righty, number four, consideration of possible action on approving the minutes of January 6th.
Make the motion to approve the minutes of January 6th?
Second. I have the motion and the second. Any discussion? That's why I sent the signature line right here.
You're unkind, it's over here.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Good morning. Number five, consideration of possible action on approving final plan of Rush Creek in section four. Come on down. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
It's 58, I said, Waterloo, Rhode Island.
Waterloo, Rhode Island. You got them all sold?
There's another two. Why are they not you?
Yes, ma'am. Now you don't know what to do.
I know.
I guess you've been through Atoch and got all the names.
Mm-hmm. Oh, the street address of?
Yes.
That comes, wait, no.
Street names?
Yeah.
Have they been registered with that cog's foot?
Um, yes, but I also think that that happens after the plan's filed.
But I guess I need, is this dedicated for y'all's maintenance?
Yes.
Okay. That's the main thing I'm worried about.
Streets. Private streets.
Sweet.
Yes, ma'am. So I'll make the motion, we approve. My second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the motion carries. Thanks and good luck.
Oh, did I get them out?
No, we got our own, but thank you.
I'm done.
Sure. I was sad, I didn't know that Emily retired.
Yes.
We miss her.
I know.
But I can't beg her back.
Can't you bribe her with money?
No.
Wow.
Randy, how are you?
I'm doing good, how are you doing?
Doing well, thank you.
I think that was actually hers, but they wouldn't buy that one.
Which one is your signature? Oh, you don't do it, they do it for you up there.
I think she stamped it. I bet she stamped her signature.
Yeah.
Is that what he's looking for?
Yeah, just so I don't smear it.
Did you get your?
Yes, thank you. See y'all next time.
Good luck. Do as you.
Number six, consideration of possible action on approving a letter from FEMA finding that Logan County roads are maintained.
So this came up in our FEMA process, they just want to see something that you guys maintain your roads on a daily basis.
Well, I'm sure this is going to be very debatable out in the public.
Absolutely.
Facts debated all the time.
The only thing I, and this is kind of sarcastic, right, but I would add that to the FEMA letter that as soon as they give us the money that we've already spent on the emergencies, we can get back to maintaining roads, you know. That would be appreciated very much.
I waited, I waited your reply.
I wish I could sit here and tell you by March 10th you'll have money or something, but I honestly, I don't know.
Really, well, you can't say March 10th, you just can't say, what, year?
Exactly.
When I want to be honest with you guys, and if I get anything that you guys have money coming, I promise I will let you know as soon as I know. Previously, though, there were instances, you guys got money, I didn't even know it was coming, so, but I don't know how soon, but...
We are expecting some federal highway for this real version, so we'll see.
We're making progress, it's slow progress, but we're getting there, but I appreciate you guys signing that.
Thank you, Dave, and I've entertained the motion on item six.
So move.
I'll second Marvin's motion, so I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the motion carries. Seven, consideration of possible action on approving contract between Logan County Health Department and Mercy Hospital, Logan County Incorporated, to provide x-ray services for 2020. Actually, it's approved.
To prove x-ray services?
It's what, it's the asset provider.
And it was interpreted, and I approve your interpretation, that's. I assume that we approved the extension.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the motion carries. Eight, consideration of possible action on approving professional service agreement between Logan County Health Department and Sherry Porter for administrative services at the rate of $15 an hour. On their contract, they just come through us because we give them the money to afford their...
Yeah, they're budgeted, their accounts are through us.
And so all contracts.
Make the motion, come through here, second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Number nine, consideration of possible action on knowledge of receipt of 2019 administrative registration report from election board.
So the election board provides an annual report of registered voters, both for the county and for the state, this doesn't require a signature. And I don't even know that it's required to come to the board, I just always do so that it's part of the record that they filed this report. The first page is for the county and statewide of the active, inactive, and total registered voters.
So how many registered voters in Logan County does it say?
Uh, 27,000.
27,000, does it break it down to?
Yes.
Will you email me a copy of that?
Sure.
Yeah, I hopefully have the election board, they don't need their numbers, so...
So no signature needed?
No.
It's growing. Slowly but surely. I make the motion to accept this report.
Yeah, you're acknowledge and receipt.
Acknowledge, receive, and report. Whatever.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the motion carries. Ten, consideration of possible action on approving resolution accepting $400 donation from Terry Swinford to District One for Culver.
Yes, sir, this is for our outfit, District One. Uh, one of the things that I wanted to bring up to discuss here is the actual cost of the culvert, now I've got the receipt here somewhere, hang on just a second. Is $397.50. And when, when we asked that, it's the first culvert, right, so the first one, Ingress Egress, it's kind of a standing thing that the landowners buy the first one and the county maintains them after that, right? So when the landowner came in to make payment for the culvert, you know, she was told it was $397.50 and she wrote the check for $400. It is my intent, and we are going to refund $2.50 back to them, we're going to write a check back to them once they get it done. So there's no mistake on that, so I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, that we are going to accept the $400, but we're going to donate, we're going to refund the excess of the cost of the culvert, even though it was only $2.50 excess, we're going to do that. With that, I make a motion, we approve the donation.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Oh, here's the, there's the receipt for that.
You want Troy to have that with the resolution?
Uh, yeah, if she would.
We can.
If we need it.
I mean, or do you want?
It doesn't matter, I give, do you decide. Thank you, sir.
Eleven, consideration of possible action on approving interlocal?
Pardon?
I can't even say it, agreement with Byboard National Purchasing Cooperative authorizing the chairman to sign if approved and appoint Logan County clerk as coordinator.
Byboard is a national purchasing cooperative that government, schools, et cetera, are allowed to use. Uh, it takes an interlocal agreement with that, I ran it by Lowell, he's looked at it, said he stood with it, it's all fine with him, this just enables us to use their contracts for purchasing of supplies and equipment. It's, it's set up just for the chairman to sign. And the verbiage authorizing chairman to sign was Lowell's.
Is this just basically like state contract?
It, it would operate the same as a state contract, it's a group that's put together in national purchasing, Oklahoma is a participant.
We did the same thing last year.
We have a couple of different ones, we've joined.
I've seen it a lot, I guess. I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Y'all okay with Troy being coordinator? Yes.
Yeah, okay.
All in favor say aye.
I'll black sound, you're all swaying.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Just thinking about who we get appointed.
Money.
You're a good big ball.
All righty, moving along. Item 12, consideration of possible action to temporarily transfer $30,000 from C B R I to District Two for purchase of a mulcher funds to be reimbursed upon receipt of grant from OCCEDB or no later than June 30th.
Right, we had a little discussion on that. What, it's 30,000, we were going to try to borrow from C B R I, I think we can go through the trust possibly, and we already had that set up. Did Lowell say anything we couldn't do?
You can't, um, to do it through the trust, the trust is going to have to actually purchase the equipment and then sell it to you as a lease purchase. That, that would be the procedure, the trust can't be used like a bank that you make a loan from, that's per...
Kind of wonder what I wanted.
If, if the trust wants to buy it and then, like with other pieces of equipment, do a lease purchase back, and then when you get to 30,000, just make a big payment, I guess, is one way to do it.
Well, our intent was just to buy. Okay. And it's not going to be a long drawn out.
And we could say that was one payment due, but 30,000 on...
Do we want to do that? Yeah, are we doing?
Well, okay, so let's, let's back up, the total cost of the mulcher is 47,000.
Right.
30,000 is a grant, District Two's covering the 17.
And District Two could make a payment of the 17 to the trust, and then the 30, when it comes back from OCCB, and that would do, that would pay off the note for the trust, right?
Yeah.
Sounds like a lot of rigging, rigging roll, if you will, but if it keeps that line of...
The whole thing has to be completed by April, let me see where it is, I thought I brought that.
But the thing to do, we just loan him the 47,000, then he can make one payment back, that's 47,000.
Purchase needs to be finalized on or before April 30th, that's per OCCDB to get this, this grant.
Right.
Here's the thing, so, so I... It's however you all want to do it.
Well, to make it clear from what Mike was talking about, we had the discussion earlier, now, we didn't discuss it outside of the board meeting, we was in a Public Works Authority meeting.
Yes.
And we discussed about the Public Works Authority loaning District Two the 47,000.
But it's not, it wouldn't be a loan.
At least...
Well, at least purchased.
It would be them lying and then doing the lease purchase, all of this having to be completed and back to, to the CED board no later than April 30th to get a check drawn back on it.
Well, the, the piece of equipment would need to be purchased prior to April 30th.
Correct, right.
Purchased and paid for, we have to submit paid receipts to get the funds back by April 30th.
And the trust could, I mean, we've got time to do that, and from the trust, we're going to, if we have a special meeting, what, Friday, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, Friday.
We could have one Friday. And I guess this started...
So you okay with that, Mike?
As long as we're not delayed to talk any extent.
Okay.
I don't have an issue with it.
So then, no, no action on item 12?
Okay.
Y'all good with that?
Yes, sir.
Troy, granted. Thirteen, consideration of possible action on resolution appointing requisition officers for various accounts.
None, I do have one on 14.
14, consideration of possible action on resolution appointing receiving officers for various accounts.
Oops, sorry.
I'll make the motion, we approve. I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the motion carries. Fifteen, consideration of possible action on consent from 10 to items.
Hang on.
Give me a favor, we can click that fan off.
Yeah.
It messes up with the audio. Turn it on.
I wish you'd come in there earlier.
Thank you, Dave. I think that memory's alive, I'm getting a little nervous here.
A limelight?
So how's the Mack business?
It's good, it's getting better. We spent the last 18 months trying to get caught up building trucks, along with everybody else, first time getting some inventory and some dump trucks coming, so...
Oilfield business slowing down, causing any griefs there?
No, it's, it's slowed down, but I anticipated that.
Sure seems to have put a lot of used equipment on the market.
Yeah, it has, it has. A lot of equipment with a lot of hours on it.
Talking like a true salesman.
Does now get more than four to four.
Exactly, exactly. That's poor of the county guys, they can't afford a whole lot of new stuff. Although we did make the last payment this month to ODOT for that dump truck that I've been paying on since I've been here.
That's nice.
Yeah.
Okay, mommy, I'm signing in, your name on this.
Yeah, I messed that up.
No, you didn't mess it up, you just... You just started in a other place.
So do you like doing business for Logan County?
I love it. Are you trying to get something started?
No, I'm just checking, really.
I've been doing really well, keeping my blood pressure under control and all that stuff. You want to poke one?
That was already pre-signed, so can you help that?
No worries. But I will, I will make a statement, I don't plan to ever borrow another nickel from ODOT again. Well, start with, you can get it cheaper through the trust, and either that or...
When these people get the plaques approved and they start building, I know the county doesn't overlook the building, the house, like inspection stuff, but does someone from the state have to do that, or does the builder can just do what they want, or, I mean, not what they want, but...
They're still accountable to whatever the state requires, but I don't know what that is.
Does the state come in and, no, I don't count.
The EQ and I first go do it for them.
There you go.
Yeah.
I think they have four people for inspection for the state. And so if there's an issue, they'll try to get to it, you know.
So there's not much coming from that.
I'm sure the...
My marshal probably will be someone to inspect.
I would, yeah, yeah.
Is what I would guess.
There's a state plumbing inspector too.
Is that electric man?
Yeah, I believe so.
That'd be like the number one thing I would want to make sure was good to go, his electrical. Plumbing, plumbing's up there too.
There's a state legal code, and they would have to do that code, but most metropolitan regulations have a code too that's more restrictive than what the state is, and it's kind of... They're more restrictive in the meaning that they get extra money for a permit to...
Yeah.
I believe there's only two counties that have...
Yeah, probably.
So they're the only ones that can do any kind of...
Would that be Oklahoma, Tulsa County?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yes.
Tulsa, Oklahoma County, all the others, Laysay Fair, whatever you want to do on your property, split.
There's also more that have planning and zoning, for, right?
I'm just saying like Canadian County, surely they got planning and zoning as big as they are. So I'm sure they would have inspectors as well.
Right. Boy, that gave the EQ fits. They wanted us to go in there and run everybody's lives on our dollar. You ever hear anything more about our six-story building here from DQ, remember?
I have not, Troy and Morgan was kind of rambling up in there.
Morning. The last, last I'd heard, they were kind of crowding on us a bit. But when they said that, yeah, we qualified, and yeah, we were, it was going to happen, and yeah, this, and yeah, that, and now it's, well, we don't know.
Don't know what's going on, huh?
Just a regular. I made that comment, you know, the thing about signing that is anything's sound, keep it to be true.
Probably is.
Yeah, it is.
So we popped their boat, or less?
Maybe if all they could do, now they're not too sure. You know, the lady sent me that day, well, we need to spend this money, and that's the perfect project, blah, blah, blah.
I was encouraged that we could get it debated without costing the county any money, but...
Man, gotten there, you have with, you know?
Certainly have not.
At least we know how much it costs, basically.
A lot.
Oh, well.
So the next thought is, what would, if we were even able to sell that building without it being debated?
Yeah.
Good looking man. Well, someone would, someone would pay it.
I agree.
That's true.
Just those all the money they can make renting it out to the court system.
Lawyers and attorneys.
Make the six-story parking garage over there, there you go.
Culver's got a six-story building we're trying to buy, it's got 24 apartments on top, that the whole thing is going to be refurbished on one of those grants if we get it. I don't know if we get it yet.
If you sell the six-story, that might be enough money to bring in to fix some of the courthouse things.
Yeah, that's it, yeah. Yeah, such on, yeah.
Pay for a light pole.
Light pole?
Yeah.
There you go.
Man, the light poles really expensive.
Everything's expensive these days.
I really put up a fit on time and they're, they're large size chocolate shakes, went up to thirty-five cents, I'd have had a cow. Oh, well. You buying blankets from the co-op?
Maybe, probably.
Blanket purchase.
It's like a cheer stomach, I think.
Yeah.
What else here?
It's coke out there.
Blanket purchase, what I was, there's a, sometimes my humor's lost by myself, you know?
Seems how we're sitting here signing these reports, I'll be able to bring it up, you know, in our last meeting, we done our jail inspection and really we didn't have much to say about the jail when we come back into session. But I thought the jail was really pretty nice, showing a little bit of age, but something I might commend the sheriff on, I guess their audit through their commissary and everything was a perfect audit. So they come back and audited him a couple of times thinking they made a mistake and they couldn't find no mistakes, so hats off to the sheriff's department for having a perfect audit on that.
Absolutely, wasn't that the only one in the state that ever done that?
Yes, it's audited down to the penny, right, on their commissary account.
So kudos to Sheriff Deborah.
And your court system there.
Yeah, I mean, the jail, how old is that jail now?
It opened in December of oh-seven.
It is showing a little bit of age on, you know, doors and traffic there, but still a very nice jail.
Yeah, we still shine too the other counties on, I know that profound, you know, so.
I'm sorry, mom.
No hurry.
Maybe we could get one of them dongos and they just kind of sign it all electronic, please.
I don't know about them dongos, uh.
Is it dingos or dongos?
Well, I don't want everyone to know how smart I am on that computer thing.
Built the website, I'm sure you can handle that.
I was waiting for it.
Not only that, we're getting IP funds now because of mine.
What?
Yeah.
Yeah.
County-wide IP.
It's time to step up to the plate.
By golly. Get some communication going.
Some of this stuff's got the treasurer's name on it, maybe some of them get it on there.
Yeah.
This one's just for.
That's a very new form for the new fund for the court clerk and why the auditor built it for just the one signature, when all the others require three, I don't know.
That would be a question for the auditor, I guess, if anybody was ever to question the auditor.
I bet they got an answer too.
It's just business practice or something. I'm just had it here.
I'd entertain a motion on the consent agenda items.
I would make that motion to accept the consent.
Marvin beat you.
Ah, then I was second, Marvin's.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, the motion carries. Sixteen consideration of possible action on bringing claims for payment for January twenty-twenty. I don't think we ought to pay any claims. So this grand total, I mean, equal all the claims?
The total is there in that paragraph that you're signing too.
With all permission, while we're signing, ask Troy, was there anything that you knew of that came out of that meeting over at the fire department at Cashman?
They appointed Tim Townsend as the actual chief, not interim or not consultant, he is the named fire chief.
You say interim, do they have a plan to provide a permanent one or something?
He is, the, the three previous had been interims. Tim was not named as an interim, he was named as chief.
I misunderstood what you said.
I have not yet made contact with him and I'm giving him a little space to figure out his direction. So in the next week or so, I'll probably reach out to him, we've got to get their stuff on our side straightened out, but.
When he was over at Oak Cliff, he's got a lot of experience with.
Exactly.
What we're doing.
That, that's very beneficial to us because he, he's well familiar with the sales tax and how it works, so. I think, I think there was a miscommunication and I think that the word disband was improperly used and that was not the intent when that came out. I think that the intent was a reorganization, I don't think disbanding was really ever a, I think someone misused that word.
I know it got a lot of people's attention.
It did, it did, it was a packed house over there, but after listening to the mayor and listening to everything, I, I do think that, that the intent was to say reorganize and, and the word disband was used instead.
Oh, I got several phone calls, I assume Monty did too, because we kind of share some of that territory.
I did receive a few. This particular one, the reason I meant, I just guessing what it costs to get a truck towed when I had that truck towed in, boy, was I ever wrong?
It's worth a phone call.
I missed it by nine hundred dollars.
I need to get the truck tow, tow business or what?
How long do you price them, Mack trucks?
That's true. That'd make the interest payment on one of them.
Yeah.
That happens, Monty.
I think I'm done. I'd entertain a motion on sixteen.
Ah, make the motion to accept.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, the motion carries. Seventeen consideration of possible action on approving purchase card payments for January twenty-twenty.
I'll make the motion to accept.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Eighteen, any citizen who's hearing to be heard?
You know, I just wanted to let you all know, if you need anything, holler on your trucks, make sure that they're running okay. And even if you take them needed, I know those guys out there, I was up there sixteen years, twenty-two years out of Oklahoma City, that was probably the main reason, okay?
Wait, can you give your name just for the minutes?
Randy Simmons with Brugger Truck Sales in Oklahoma City.
Thank you.
And Chad Holly, that used to be the shop foreman in, in it as a service manager in Tulsa, so just anywhere you're at and if you need to get in a shop, if you have an issue, be sure to call me.
Yeah.
I can check it from my side.
I do have some questions I'll ask you after the meeting.
Okay.
All right, anybody else? Nineteen comments, announcements, questions by the board?
Well, I had the plan in hand meeting with Carver Engineering in Oklahoma County District Three on Waterloo. There's two miles there that will be adding a third lane on the south side. Eventually, it's thought they'll have a fourth lane on the north side, middle lane to be, turn lane dedicated. They're going to have, what they're planning for is roundabouts at Midwest and at Douglas on Waterloo. So that'll be an interesting learning curve, but on the other side of coin, they'll probably try to get some of those hundred percent safety grants for that. Maybe it'll get totally paid for. Anyhow, that's where we're at right now, the final plan will be coming down soon. I've got a little bit of easement that I'm going to hand to purchase, but otherwise, it ought to be a very interesting endeavor.
Good deal. Marvin, do you got anything?
Couple things, sir. One, to follow up on some things that we started last year. The reward fund for destruction of county property and the county-wide forty-five mile an hour speed limit. We, we've yet to have a discussion with the district attorney's office, the sheriff, the county clerk, and, and at that time it was myself, I'd kind of like to stay involved with that because I, I kind of understand the issue. But I, I really do believe we, we do need to have a, a meeting to sit down and discuss these things and try and figure out how to, how to move forward. The reward fund is not just a, a simple reward thing and Troy can explain the, the ins and outs of that if, if we need to, again, it's, it's, it can be kind of complicated, it's something that the district attorney and the sheriff's office would need to work closely with, together to, to determine what the reward would, would be and how much would be reimbursed back into the fund and, and those sorts of issues, and we really need to work with the district attorney's office on that. I know our DA has assigned our ADA to, to help us with that because she advocated to him that he was the smartest one to do that kind of stuff, which I, I tend to agree with that. Lowell's a pretty good guy. Also, the same thing with the county-wide forty-five mile an hour speed limit. The, the feedback we've been getting from the patrol division or our county sheriff's office is that we have a few ADAs that are reluctant to prosecute people in excess of forty-five mile an hour speed on an unposted road when in fact, okay, all right, Troy, so in fact, that, that may have been a misunderstanding, we, we hope to get that resolved, Troy indicated she's got an update on that, ma'am?
I, I sent the information to Lowell in nineteen ninety-seven, I believe, was the date of the resolution that this board passed establishing forty-five miles an hours the speed limit on any unposted roadway. Lowell's looked it all over, the last conversation I had with him is that based on the information that he's been provided, he, he believes we're good to go, he's advised the DA to pass that information up and along to the other ADAs, that, that forty-five is the posted, if there's not a sign. I mean, even without a sign, we have a forty-five mile an hour. Any, any issue with that should now be resolved.
Correct, but did Lowell release that to writing and?
No, that was just in one of my meetings with him, or actually, I think on the phone, he told me.
Yeah, okay, well, I mean, although he's, he's very well respected, if you go into a meeting and, and lean off what Lowell said, you know, it's.
And, and I understand, like I said, this just happened in a call, and I think the thing with, with Lowell on his side was, he's given the information to his boss to.
Yes, ma'am, I, I guess what I'm looking for is something back from the DA's office officially saying that yes, this, we, we understand the issue and this is the way we're going to pursue it in the future.
So I will email Laura maybe, because that's how, I mean.
Sure, sure, I understand, and then, but we still need to have that meeting on the reward fund and go over with that. Then the only other thing that I, I wanted to bring up and we touched on it already is the six-story abatement. That's kind of stalled as far as I know, and I don't know, Troy, have you, have you heard any more on that?
No.
Okay. One of the suggestions I would like to make is if we can, maybe pry those people out of their offices and have them come talk to us about where we're at and what's possible now and, you know, because there was some, my understanding, some hemming and hawing going on and I'd like to, I'd like to better understand, I'm sure the board would like to understand better where we're at on that as well.
Do you remember that lady's name?
Erin Samwell, Samwell. And, and so, you know, we got the report and at the time of the report, then I said, oh, great, when is, when's the work going to commence? Because that was our understanding. And then it was, well, no, that's, we did the abatement now, and I said, you know, we had the back and forth, and so there were other programs that she was going to pass on to somebody that's not her. She, she does the abatement part, I mean, the, the, the assessment part, and they've done that. Now, the idea that, that there may be, now it's, we might have something maybe, possibly, that would do the work to actually do the abatement, which was not what was presented to us when we did this. She was passing it on to the channels of someone who deals with programs that we might slide into.
So it's the bureaucratic response, not my job.
Well, it, it, it's unfortunate because I think this board, myself, questioned her very heavily in, in the fact that you're saying that both sides, we're going to get this whole thing from the assessment to the abatement done on these federal programs, not going to cost the county anything, suddenly that ended up not being what is being done, so.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that, that's all I have.
All righty, item twenty, consideration of prospects on adjournment.
Second.
I have two motions in one second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.